The order of business of the City Council tonight is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should please come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the City Council to identify themselves, the name of their organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating your name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to this item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And tonight is one of those open microphone evenings. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our City Council Agenda Monday, March 27, 2023, is our Consent Agenda, Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Is anyone here present that would like to comment on either Items 1 or 2 on the Consent Agenda? Items 1 or 2? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
We cannot vote on these items. Items 2A and 2B were introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Bekias. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our Consent Agenda. We shall now move on to Section 4 of Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll be calling Item 4A and 4B together. Item 4A is application of Chef &amp; Bros. LLC doing business at Soulful Casino for a Class I liquor license located at 6105 Havlock Avenue and the related manager application of Manuel Hurd. Hello, sir.
Welcome.
This is my wife, Tina.
Both of you, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Yes, thank you very much, sir.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your business and your application?
Yep, we have a soul food, barbecue and soul food restaurant and slash food truck, but we're just, the liquor license is for the food truck, I mean, the restaurant over on Havlock, 6105 Havlock.
Okay, very good. And would you mind stating your name and address for our, for the record, please?
Manuel Hurd, and is that the, my home address, or?
Um, let's see.
Or the?
The business address, yes, thank you.
Manuel Hurd, 6105 Havlock Avenue, 68507.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Councilman Bowers?
I just wanted to say thanks so much for moving into the Havlock neighborhood. It's a delight to have you there, and it's been great to see your restaurant being packed.
Have you came in?
No, I think I ran into you, I ran into someone who worked at your, I don't think it was you, but I think it was someone else who was taking pictures in front, like, a week before opening.
Oh, it was us.
It was you? Okay, awesome, awesome.
Yeah, because you walked by.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I remember you now.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was us.
No, I'm excited, I mean, you bring in a lot of, like, vibrancy in life to Havlock, so thank you so much.
You're welcome, man.
My office is, like, right across, so I'm gonna have to monitor myself, make sure I'm staying in my calories, going over every single day.
I'm sure we got something for you.
Perfect. Seriously, thank you for coming to Havlock.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Any other comments or questions for applicants? All right.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of these two items.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers.
Yes.
Bowers. McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
You're approved. Yes, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Yes, best wishes.
Next will be Section 5 of Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for March 1 through March 15, 2023.
Is there anyone present that would like to comment on this item? Item 5A, pending claims before the city. Item 5A. All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
We cannot vote on this item, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for March 1 through March 15, 2023, introduced by Bekias.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Suarez. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes Section 5. We shall now move on to Section 6 of our Agenda, Public Hearing Ordinance, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 6A is amending Section 12.08.270 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to alcoholic liquor prohibited, exceptions and permit requirements to allow a tenant in the Active Living Center Condominium Association to obtain a liquor license on the premises of the Jane Snyder Trail Center and adjacent park premises between P Street and Q Street.
Welcome, Director.
Good evening, Council. Maggie Stuckey-Ross with Parks and Recreation Center. Parks and Recreation, I just read the word center, I'm sorry, department. The Active Living Center at Union Plaza was built about 10 years ago. We organized it as a condominium association with three owners when it was built, three owners, three condo units. The first unit was the Hub Cafe, owned by Doug Ditman and Carla McCullough. Second, the Community Health Endowment, which occupies the second floor space. And finally, the Jane Snyder Trail Center, which is owned by the City of Lincoln. Parks and Rec appreciates this longstanding relationship with the Hub Cafe and its owners, and pursuant to an annual license agreement, Doug and Carla actually manage the Jane Snyder Trails Center for the department, as well as the adjacent outdoor space. We share the same goal of activating the Union Plaza area, and this partnership has done just that. Union Plaza has become one of Lincoln's favorite destinations for live music, farmers' markets, and more. After several years in the restaurant and park activation business, Doug and Carla are selling the Hub Cafe to a valued employee, their chef, Jacob Thiessen, and his partner, Crystal. The license agreement the city has with the Hub Cafe will also transfer to Jacob and Crystal as well as part of this. You might remember that the basic rule outlined in City Code is that no alcohol is allowed in city parks or at city park facilities. The code then lays out specific exceptions to that general rule, and one of those exceptions is to allow alcohol in the Jane Snyder Trail Center and the adjacent outdoor living space pursuant to a written agreement with one of the condo owners. So, the amendment before you today would expand that exception to an allow an agreement with either one of the condo owners or a tenant of the condo owner. Jacob and Crystal will be tenants of the Hub Cafe, tenants of Doug and Carla, so this amendment would then allow Jacob and Crystal to seek a liquor license for the space they will eventually manage. There will be some additional agreements and council action parallel to this amendment change. As I mentioned earlier, the Hub Cafe will assign its license agreement with the city for the Jane Snyder Trail Center and the adjacent outdoor space to Jacob and Crystal. My team is still working with City Law to get that assignment finalized. And Jacob and Crystal, obviously, will be seeking a liquor license, which I understand will be on your agenda next week. Again, the Parks and Rec Department appreciates the relationship we've had with Doug and Carla. We look forward to this new partnership with Jake and Crystal. We are fully supportive of this ordinance change, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We appreciate it. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Is there anyone else here that would like to testify on this item?
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing none, we can move on.
I'll be calling Item 6B, Change of Zone 06075B, Application of Olson to amend the existing Wilderness Commons Plant Unit Development by expanding the covered area by .77 acres and to increase the number of allowed dwelling units from 401 to 468, and to adjust the maximum height for multifamily to 65 feet with associated waivers on the property generally located at 40th Street and Wilderness Hills Boulevard.
Is there anyone here present to testify on this item? Anyone present? Item 6B. Is there any staff present on this item? All right. Seeing none.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I actually have questions.
Here we go.
Keep talking, who's up for it?
I wanted my questions on the record, but I see that we have someone ready to testify.
Very good, thank you. I was pausing. Welcome, David Carey, Director.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South Penn Street. My apologies for being a little bit slow and getting lost here.
We're glad you're here.
I think on behalf of the applicant, I guess I would explain the changes on this before you today. This item was approved by the Planning Commission at its March 8 meeting. It was part of the Consent Agenda and therefore didn't have a public hearing at that time. This is a change to provide for a small addition to the PUD on the northern area of this area that's under consideration, and then also to allow for a higher height up to 65 feet. We've had several of these types of requests in the recent past where we had items that were requesting a taller height for some of the multifamily structures that are being proposed in this area. I will add that this is the area that's being added to the PUD up to the north here. It's a, it's comparatively a pretty minor area. And then the area to the south of that would be the multifamily. It's appropriate for the change in height to be allowed mainly because we have 40th Street to the east that is a buffer to any other development. We also have a drainage way that kind of runs through this, this area that provides another buffer to the, to the west. And then obviously, there's an intervening street to the south as well within the same development. So, it's an item that we are in support of in the Planning Department, so was the Planning Commission, and so we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Questions for Director Carey? Councilman McGinnis?
Did you talk about adding the .77 acre?
Yes, that's the.
Where would that be?
That's this smaller area to the very top of this.
Okay. And these aren't just the apartments? This is total dwelling units for the R2 and the apartments?
So, what is referenced in the staff report are the number of units that are, would be, would be allowed by density. They're requesting lower than what would, could be allowed. And then there's an overall development. So, this is, this focus on what, how many apartment units are going to be built as part of this phase of development.
And that's why they're asking for the change? Add more apartment units?
Yes, then what was originally approved?
The original R2 or the?
Correct.
Single-family lots are about the same?
Overall, as far as the overall development, it's similar in numbers, yes.
And also includes a commercial area, correct?
Correct, then this area to the south here.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Carey, I was reading through the report, and actually, I got a little confused because one section said that it was going from 300 to 367 units, and another section said 401 to 468.
Correct.
So, which one, how, how many units are they proposing to build?
Just one moment, let me, I'm catching up to the section that you were referencing.
Yeah. I think they were on different pages as well.
Yes, so, this area of the, the multifamily portion of this PUD is what is changing from, in, increasing in 67 units, going from 300 to 367 units.
Okay, so.
So, that's the change, the specific change.
That's the specific change, but 468 are allowed? And they're only building 367?
Correct. So, yes, you have caught up to it faster than I did, and, so that's, that the 400 numbers are what would, what could be allowed.
What could be allowed, and so they're asking for 367?
Correct.
Could you remind us, back in June of 2018, when they established this PUD, were there, were there any folks who came forward in opposition? I'm thinking specifically about the height?
Um, in, well.
And I might be trying to remember a different PUD where neighbors were concerned?
I believe that the, there were a few different projects that did have opposition. This one in particular did not, mainly because what ended up happening here is we have a pipeline planning area along Yankee Hill Road, and so from what was originally planned, we've kind of moved things around, and that provided an opportunity for the applicant as well as for the Planning Department to work with them on locating the higher buildings in a place that would be less, less of a problem, I guess is the way to put it.
Okay.
And so, I think you're, you're remembering some other projects that did have a lot more opposition.
Okay. All right, well, that's, that's good to know, and I don't think, oh, and you said the three-quarters of an acre is all floodplain?
Yes, so, that, that, yes, and the northern portion. It was just meant to clean up the area so that it was part of it.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Other questions for Director Carey? Comments? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? We're on Item 6B. Item 6B, anyone else? All right. Seeing none?
Okay.
Let's move on, Madam Clerk.
I'll be calling Item 6C, Approving the Lease Agreement Between the City of Lincoln and the Life Skills Connection, Inc., for the lease of space at 1330 N Street, Suite A and B, from April 1, 2023 through January 31, 2028.
Please come forward, and anyone else?
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name's Dylan Runn at the American Job Center, 1330 N Street. Life Skills is going to be moving into the American Job Center. They provide recruiting services for job corps, so they'll be recruiting people for Pine Ridge in Chatter, Nebraska, and then the Denison Center. And this is a complimentary service to our youth program, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
That's great news. Any questions or comments for Dylan? Yeah, that's very good. We, um, how many, maybe, it's in the attachment, how many employees will be coming in?
One.
Just one?
Yeah.
Well, that's great. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad you're here, Dylan. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Item 6C. Item 6C? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
Okay, I'll be calling Item 6D, Approving the Lease Agreement Between the City of Lincoln and the Nebraska Department of Administrative Services on behalf of Nebraska Center for the blind and visually impaired for the lease of space by the Nebraska Center for the blind and visually impaired at 1330 N Street, Suite A and B, from February 20, 2023, through December 31, 2029.
That's right. Welcome back, Dylan, yes.
Thank you. Again, another complimentary service to what we're already doing there. The Commission for the Blind helps individuals that are visually impaired find employment. So, a lot of times, there's co-enrollment opportunities between their program and ours.
Questions? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I noticed the dates are different.
Yes.
One, yeah, it's 28, and one's 29. Length of lease?
The reason it's different is Life Skills Grant was different, so.
Okay.
They, they competitively bid it out, and so they don't know what it will look like after that date. Anything else?
I have a question for law, when he has a chance.
Okay. Any questions for Dylan before? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering if these are longstanding partnerships or new partnerships, or how you became, you know?
Life Skills is a new one, and the Commission for the Blind is a required partner of the American Job Center, but this is the first time they've actually been co-located with us. So, Nebraska VR was approved, I think, last time you met, and so they are also part of the, the group of helping us serve individuals with disabilities, so.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, before you go, Dylan, I just have a quick question for you. Is it, again, one staff person with the center that's coming with the visually impaired?
Yep, just one.
Okay. And is this the existing, because there's a Commission for the Visually Impaired with the state of Nebraska, is this the same?
This is, this is a.
Or is this different?
No, this is it.
Same.
It's the Nebraska Commission for the Visually Impaired.
So, it's a staff of one?
Yep.
Okay.
Just a staff of one. So, they're actually only going to be there one day a week.
Okay.
So, and they're sharing the cubicle with Southeast Community College's Adult Education Program, so.
Great.
I hope we'll be talking about that soon.
Are you getting full?
Yeah, we've got five spots left.
One cube at a time.
That's right, that's quite the village there, yeah.
There'll be a few more, I think nine-something on here's also got ones.
All right.
We've been busy.
That's you have been. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Yes, thank you for your support.
That's great work.
It's difficult.
Yes, okay.
See it filled up.
All right, and Councilwoman McGinnis, you wanted to hear from our.
Question for our city attorney?
Okay. If you'd come forward, please, Mr. Christie, thank you.
This is going to seem very petty, which I'm good at being.
Excellent.
But I don't believe the City of Lincoln owns this property.
I think I am more than happy to look in that, look into that some more, if you would like. I think that the City of Lincoln has certainly been operating and in control of that property for a very long time, and I am, like I said, I'm happy to give you, provide more specifics on that agreement prior to the vote, or it looks like Dylan would like to add something.
I think I had this question before. If the city doesn't own it, how can they be the lessor, or would they be the sublessor?
Well, I, I think that we can, well, I'll, you, you were coming up to say.
I know the, I know the answer. The city owns, the city owns the building, and they lease the property from.
Ground?
Yeah, the ground, the dirt.
I was gonna say, I'm happy to provide, I can find the agreement, yeah, and provide it to.
Thank you both.
Just trying to.
I, I did not know that off the top of my head, thank you.
We'll look forward to that.
Didn't expect you to, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions for staff or law? Okay. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Item 6D. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, let's please move on.
Okay, I'll call Item 6E, Text Amendment 23002, Application of Philip Euler to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.82.050, imposition of impact fees to allow for a transfer of credit from an old location to a new location within the same final plat where the old location is converted to a roadway.
Is there anyone present that would like to testify on this item? Please come forward, Item 6C.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Philip Euler. I reside at 5520 Grouse Place, Lincoln, Nebraska. This is a request that came from Prairie Hill Place Development that was approved a couple of years ago by the City Council as a community unit plan. Part of that plan was to move a house on South 46th Street, 3230. It was moved in April, to, this coming April will be two years. Of course, we had to build a road first, had to put in sewer, had to put in water, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, finally, in December of last year, I applied for a building permit to build a basement to put this house down. It's been sitting on I-beams for a couple of years. And they said, well, you need to pay an impact fee, and I said, well, I don't think so, but let's look into it, and so we did, and now this is the end resolution. I think it's better for the code, not only for me, but for anybody else who decides, especially to do an infill project, you know, egress is important, and, and so, the way it is now, without this amendment, that credit just evaporates and goes somewhere. This way, we can capture it and allow the developer to use it for constructing a new home or rehabbing the home that was there. So, that's why I'm here. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Euler. Questions for our testifier? Comments for Mr. Euler? All right. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I had a question for law.
Okay, very good. Mr. Christie, would you please address a question from Councilwoman Washington?
I promise you, this is not stump our city attorney's day.
It's okay if it is.
I noticed in the staff report a conversation that was held during the Planning Commission about some, some details, technical details or typos on the ordinance, and I wanted to know if all those changes had been addressed between the Planning Commission hearing and And if Director Carey is familiar.
I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm double-checking.
Okay.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. So, the, the short answer is yes. So, there were some, I would say, late-breaking changes in the proposed language as we were going to Planning Commission, and really, what it, what we were working on, and is noted in the staff memo of March 7th in the staff report, is that we did a final, final change to the language that's proposed to change that made it more specific about dealing with a public right-of-way as part of a final plat, which is the, absolutely the case involved in Mr. Euler's situation. So, his situation is handled correctly, and it's being more specific to that situation so that it's much more clear of how and when we would apply this option.
Okay, so someone else coming forward?
Correct.
Could also, okay.
Correct. So, it wouldn't happen really often, but it does, obviously, it happens, and so we want to be very clear about what situation would qualify for this type of way of handling the impact fee.
And is this similar, I'm gonna, is this similar to what's allowed for commercial when commercial developers can move an impact fee around?
So, I believe so. Michaela Sweeney is here, she is our impact fee administrator.
Yep.
So, I think a specific question about that would be better answered by her.
Yeah.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Michaela Sweeney, I'm the impact fee administrator for L T U.
Great, thank you. I was just curious in having conversations with Mr. Euler a few, a couple months ago, I actually, probably, that this was something that was allowed for commercial developers, and I think we were trying to find a solution that worked for smaller residential developers in shifting the impact credit, and I wanted to know, is this very similar to what's allowed?
We don't have anything different between residential and commercial. How the ordinance was written is that the credit remains with the parcel. This is, this is new and different for us, and that credit remaining with the parcel was applied to commercial or residential projects. Yeah.
Well, thank you, I'm glad we found a solution.
Yes, you're welcome.
She has all the answers.
She does.
I try.
Been around, has a while.
Thank you.
I've been a while, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 6E. Item 6E, anyone else? Yes, would you like to close, Mr. Euler, on this item?[1630.62] Do you have an opportunity to close or rebut, if you would like?
Rebuttal, it's just a clarification. As I understood, the language that was revised from what was approved by the Planning Commission or at the time of the Planning Commission was that it was a reuse of the lot from which the house went to, they had it in public right-of-way. And I said, well, what about a private street? You know, if a developer decides to do a private street and next additions of Prairie Hill Place may very well likely do that, which I showed in my application for this. To get to Hillside, to continue Peanut Hill, Trolley Lane, and on south to Hillside, that lot is 45 feet wide. I can't build a city street there because it takes 60-foot of right-of-way. But it would allow through and so I could build a potentially a private street. And when I talked to city staff, particularly Steve Hendrickson, he said that that was the language that was put in, that it was public or private street and not just a right-of-way. Because that, to me, that term was vague. When I read the ordinance, it really wasn't defined. But public and private streets are definitely defined. So I just want to make sure that's what we're considering here this evening.
Thank you for that clarity, clarification. Are there questions or comments from staff, council? Anyone? All right. Thank you, Mr. Euler. All right. That will close the hearing on item 6E. Madam Clerk, if we could move on, please.
Okay, that concludes our Section 6 Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading and Related Resolutions. We shall move on to Section 7. Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 7A is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.76.335 Appointments to Positions in Classified Services to Modernize the Language and to Allow More Flexibility for the Hiring Process, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. And I would recognize Councilman Bowers.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I would just like to make a motion that we delay this for one week. One week will be April 3rd.
Second.
It's been seconded and a motion made to delay for one week and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote on the amendment to delay? I'm sorry, the motion to delay.
Suarez.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckeas.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
On the main motion?
We're delaying it one week.
Oh, then we're good. Never mind. Thank you, okay.
Item 7B, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 8.36.010 Definitions to amend the definition of family swimming pool and to add definitions for fence, pool alarm, and safety cover and by amending Section 8.36.020 enclosure to add regulations for safety covers and pool alarms, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckeas. And we do have an amendment. Motion to amend number one.
I'll move approval of motion to amend number one.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington.
Is there anyone from Health here?
Christie's dames all over it. I did see one of them here too.
You want to speak on the amendment? You would like us to speak on the amendment?
Please.
Yes, and so the motion to amend is, it deletes the definition of a pool alarm and any references to the pool alarm, which by deleting that, it would get rid of the requirement that there be a pool alarm. That's what it does. It deletes the requirement for a pool alarm.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Do you mind? Okay.
Please.
So last week, when we talked about this, I had raised some concerns about an above-ground hot tub then requiring a pool alarm based upon, I guess, my understanding of the changes that the Health Department was suggesting. Then I heard on Friday that they were going to strike the pool alarm altogether, but it has no impact on the cover still being required. I want to be very clear about that. But this also takes away the pool requirement or the alarm requirement for pools as well, not just hot tubs. It's across-the-board, pool requirements are removed. But it does nothing in regards, it still requires the cover when there's not a fence present.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, correct. Okay. And this was a change coming from the Health Department?
Correct. I think that it was a reaction to some of the questions. And then upon further reflection, I believe the Health Department's position felt like the requirements that were in place were adequate and that a pool alarm is not necessary so long as, like you referenced, there's still a pool cover.
Okay.
Thought that that was sufficient.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I was anticipating the potential removal of pool alarm for an above-ground hot tub, not necessarily a pool. And so didn't know how folks felt about that, so.
Rick Tast, City Attorney's Office, Councilwoman Beckeas. I'd spoke with environmental health and they evaluated either redefining pool and separating that from hot tubs.
Okay.
Traditionally thought of, or eliminating the pool arm. And they had looked and determined that they could meet the safety requirements they felt were necessary by just having a cover that meets A S T M standards.
Okay, so health still felt like the health, the safety requirements were still being met. So, okay, very good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilman McGinnis.
No, I agree. Because it did say installation of a safety cover and a pool alarm, both were needed. So now you're just saying the safety cover, we need at least a safety cover. We don't require both of them.
Correct. That's right.
Anyone else have questions or comments about this amendment? Motion to amend? All right. Thank you both for your assistance. Councilman Beckeas, any other comments from you? Okay? All right. Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote on motion to amend number one?
Washington.
Yes.
Beckeas.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now to the main motion.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckeas.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right.
Item 7C is Annexation 22012. Application of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to annex approximately 400 and 45 acres, more or less, on property generally located between 70th and Pine Lake and 84th and Yankee Hill, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckeas. Councilman McGinnis, you are recognized?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend number one, which is to delay the effective date of the annexation of the properties until July 1, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Discussion. Councilman McGinnis.
Yeah, what this is doing is moving the date out until July before the annexation will take effect. Basically, what this does is remove, or will allow the county and the Southeast Rural Fire District to collect all of 2023 taxes for that year of 2023. So basically, give Rural Fire District and if the county needs it, another year to budget for the loss of the income that they will get from being taken out of the Fire District.
Other comments or questions on motion to amend number one? Yes, Councilwoman Washington.
Councilman McGinnis, thank you for creating this solution. I know we've talked about it for a while and I appreciate your leading on this one.
Yes, Councilman Beckeas?
Yes, I concur with both my colleagues. I think that giving this additional lead time for the Southwest fire response to adequately plan and prepare for their next steps makes complete sense. So thank you, Councilman McGinnis, for suggesting.
Other comments on the amendment? Before we get to the main motion? Any others? Good for now. Okay. All right, seeing none. Any other comments, Councilman McGinnis, on your amendment?
Nope, not on the amendment.
All right. I agree, I think that's a, thank you for bringing it forward. It's a great compromise. Seeing no other comments, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion to amend number one?
Beckeas.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now to the, to the main item. Councilman McGinnis.
Yeah, this has been a long, well, six months or so for me when I've gotten involved in this. I know how when it affects you personally, it really means a lot. And this is really affecting a lot of homes personally. And it's their homes, it's their property. I do not believe that their fire coverage will be affected too much, if at all. I believe in Lincoln Fire Department and their response times and their quality of fire care. So, and fire and professionalism. So I'm not worried about the fire problems that have been brought up a lot. And I, personally, I think a lot of it was because they really enjoy their Southeast Rural Fire and it's been really good for them and they didn't want to lose that. But I really believe that the fire, our Lincoln Fire Department is as good as any and professional will be there and to, I don't think there'll be that much change. There is going to be some inconveniences that are going to be different. They're going to be part of the city. They're going to have to start live with some of the city rules. And it's not going to be easy, but it is just something that I think time, we needed to do at this time. They've been, we've been at this for quite a few years. They've known they're going to be coming in, so they should have started to figure out that this was going to happen. I think delaying it until we annex all the area wouldn't be right because we don't know how the city is going to continue to grow. And it could, all of a sudden, we could grow dead east and no longer grow south. You know, so I think we just need to take these as we go forward and it will be, it will be okay for the acreage owners. It might not be exactly what they wanted, but I think it will be okay for them.
Other comments? Councilwoman Washington?
First, I want to echo what Councilman McGinnis has said. I know this is a real concern for folks and I've heard you since October, we've been in conversations and you told me all your concerns and a lot of your concerns deal with public safety and whether or not you'll have adequate fire coverage. There's two things that I'm going to repeat, so pardon me for repeating, but there's two things I believe sincerely. I believe that L F R does a fantastic job. I think they provide excellent fire coverage to the city of Lincoln. And I know that you have concerns about whether or not they can adequately protect acreages, especially along the railroad tracks. Purchasing tankers will be my highest priority going forward. And I also know that we have a long history of mutual aid between L F R and rural fire departments, whether it's Southeast or Southwest or Hickman or. And I trust the relationships that have been built in our broader community of Lancaster County. And I know that we stand up for each other and we support each other when that's necessary. And so going forward, I believe that we're going to have good public safety. And, you know, it will be a little bit of hurt hooking up to water and sewer because those are costs that you haven't had to bear as of yet. And you get to make that decision for when you're ready to do that. And certainly, I want to welcome you to the city of Lincoln. And I know it's not going to be exactly what you wanted, but you've got now a little bit of time to plan for that.
Other comments? And it all? Anyone else? I guess I would just like to add one, read a text that I got over the weekend from some friends of mine that have lived on these acreages for 30 years. And it's already been echoed how painful this process has been for those who live there. And I want to also thank Councilman McGinnis for leading this effort. It's not easy and we keep saying that, but it's not. And then we know it's difficult. And I'm a rural kid at heart, so I can relate to the, that loss of losing your role, thinking that you're going to lose your rural fire department and those fears. But I also now can assure you, I too have the utmost faith and confidence in Lincoln Fire and Rescue. And it wasn't a fire, but they did save my life less than a year ago. And I know that they're committed and our chief is here and he is committed to doing the very best that we can to make sure that you're protected as well and kept safe. That's our job and that's what we'll continue to do, to make sure that that happens for you. I want to read just a quick text I got over the weekend from my friends that are affected in terms of burn permits. And this is something I'd ask the Health Department, who I, I know Rick Tast is here, but other department officials to think about as we move forward. Because this makes a lot of sense to me. But it says, "Good morning, we just took care of our burn pile this morning. It was about 15 feet around and 10 feet high. It's just yard debris from our winter and cleaning up our flower beds and grasses this spring." And they sent a picture of the burn permit. "We do this once or twice a year. If we are unable to do something like this in the future, we're up a crick." So please, lots to consider in this annexation with such little time. But now we have more time. Thank you, Councilwoman McGinnis, to this start. So they said maybe exceptions could be made for properties three acres or more. So there's lots of things to think about. There's always time to make changes. That's also our job to make things better and we do that all the time. And I know Director Carey is also committed to tweaking things as we go along. And I know that's not a lot of consolation, but that we can, that we can do. And nothing is ever perfect in the beginning. And so please keep working with us. So with that, if there are no other comments from the council, Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote on the main motion?
Beckeas.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right.
That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. Section 8 is our resolutions first readings. Those are items 8A through 8L. Section 9, Ordinance's First Readings and Related Resolutions are items 9A through 9O. Section 10 is our pending list, items 10A through 10C.
Did she say 9O?
Yes, sir.
Next week will be fun.
Plus the one we delayed, so.
All right.
We can add another one.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening is public comment portion, we're to that part of the agenda. If anyone here is wishing to address the council on a matter that was not on this agenda or planned to be on a future agenda, you may do so at this time. Please come forward if you would like to address the City Council on any matter that's important to you. You will have five minutes, but please come on forward. Is there anyone here that would like to address the City Council? Okay, seeing none.
Madam Chair, a move will adjourn?
Is seconded by Councilwoman Washington. No filibuster, please, okay? Please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckeas.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
We are adjourned.